Hi Bob.
There you go. Hey Natalie.
Hi.
How are you, Matt?
Hey Bob. Hi Natalie.
Hi Annette.
How are you guys?
Good. I just got off the TRIBOR meeting, Finance Committee, School Board, and Select Board.
Woo. So you're done. Oh gosh.
I don't want to be on any of those boards, let me tell you.
I haven't been on any of those boards.
No, thank you. You could not pay me to be on the school committee. You could not pay me.
I'm hearing a lot about those school committees lately.
Too stressful, too stressful.
Yeah. Well, we need someone like you on there.
No, 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 no. No, no.
Could you just give the time again? I'm sorry, Chris, it didn't go on yet.
Oh sure. So this is the planning board meeting for March 22nd, 2022, and the time is 7:04 PM. We will do roll call. Bob Brown?
Yes.
Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yes.
Thank you Natalie. And Annette, your meeting.
Sure.
Thank you, Annette. Okay, Bill, we have a very short agenda for tonight. And I know, let's see, you have some updates. I have some thoughts on how to realign some of our priorities, because we have a few items that I think would be helpful to put some energy towards. And I know that Bill Crenshaw and I am assuming Brad is here as well for this, an update on the home occupation.
Yeah.
Working group. Maybe I'll give my thoughts on how we can realign some of our efforts and then we can turn towards the update from Bill and Brad. And then maybe we can discuss the downtown overlay district, which was scheduled for tonight's discussion. Does that sound okay?
Sure. You want to do minutes, Mr. Chair, first or not?
We can, if that's important. Yeah, let's do minutes. Yeah, item one, minutes. Thank you.
For, I won't forget that.
This is the minutes I have here, minutes, Bill, from March 8th.
That is correct.
Are there any other minutes or is this the only minutes? Is, are there any other minutes? Or is this the only minutes?
No, that's it. We're up to date pretty much. Not pretty much, we're up to date.
Just a quick question. Can you do, so we didn't get the minutes and so it wasn't on the agenda. Can you still approve them even though it wasn't on the posted agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
The item here, it says public hearing for Green Meadow Water Treatment Plant. I didn't realize it was being called Green Meadow.
Yeah.
Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah.
And is that because it's on Green Meadow property?
You know, I don't know. Um, it was, yeah, no. And the reason is when you look these things up, like when you go to place the ad, it's, it's with town-owned stuff, it's a little, you know, it's just kind of weird. Like the one will have an address for this and like this is that address of whatever it was. But it's not real helpful if the, you know, they're on an address. So what we do is use a lot and block and then whatever the name of the actual facility is, and that's the name of that. I thought it was well number four. I was calling it well four.
Well, so well four is refers to the wells. So there's well four, well, one, actually wells one through five over there. So the, the new project that has sparked the updates on the plant was the drilling of well four A, which is the new well that will be drilled and then that water from that well will be put into that current water treatment center. So it's a water treatment plant. So because we were trying to also be consistent, because in, in conservation, we were calling it, it's the well for project. And that's what they're calling it too in DPW. So we're, you'll see number four, Green Meadow Plant. It's all trying to be all in one to be as clear as possible.
Any comments on the minutes?
Yeah, I got a big one.
So.
Wrong.
It is.
Hey. Bill Nemzer, oh no.
Failed my first test.
Uh, so another thing that we just need to make sure that we make an edit on is the conditions for R three. So.
I already did that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I fixed that up. That was, where, Bill, I spelled your name wrong.
A few times there.
Couple of times it's spelled with an E instead of an N.
It's Powder Mill Road Corridor mostly.
All right. This is our, our new, this is our new, oh my God, it is, I see it. It is wrong. All right, you're, you're fit, you're officially fixed on this one.
All right. While we're nitpicking, there's a insure, that should be an insure.
Oh, I hate that. And, and I see what, and north side is capitalized, north is not capitalized. All right. Insure, okay, we'll get the insure. Yeah.
All right, everybody. Any other comments on this? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I was talking that.
Thanks Jim. All in favor by voice? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, Jim, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Five zero, Bill, for minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Before we discuss, I'd like to skip item three, but before we do that, a few, a few things has come to my attention. Jim, the there's, there's been some movement regarding some interest in the Mill and Main property. I don't, there's not many details, but can you, can you work with Bill Nemzer as a representative of the planning board to work offline, behind the scenes to see what those, see what's, you know, what the ideas are and report back to the board, please?
Really be glad to.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, if you could catch up with me sometime, maybe this week, I'll give you, there's some things cooking and I'm gonna need some input.
I'll send you an email, Bill.
Thank you.
Now, we need, the select board has requested that we participate in a working group for the two Powder Mill Road property or the potential applicant for that. And, and they're asking for two members of the planning board. I'm going to join as one member.
I'll go.
Based on, based on availability. Natalie, I thought you would be a good representation to provide different perspective, but I wanted to check with your availability on that.
Yeah, Two Powder Mill Road, that's the, that's Banner Glass, right? That's.
They, they came in, Bill, can you provide better backgrounds on this?
The pot delivery people, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It, and Bill, can you just summarize working group would be?
Yes, like, so I'll give you a little background on, you, you guys remember the basic project, Tim Hess came in about six months ago, whatever. And there was a question. It would involve whether the project actually involved two Waltham Street, which is the comic book store and the adjacent abandoned building and two Powder Mill, because they were both acquired by the developer. And I don't know exactly what happened, but it went originally, it was going to be two separate projects and back and forth, but in the end now, it is going to be one project, I believe, and it's going to be phased. Um, the marijuana delivery project really doesn't have anything to do with us until it comes to special permit time typically. So they would normally just come to us when it was, you know, they'd have the host community agreement and then come to us and so on. The mixed use, the proposed mixed use project adjacent to it um is proposing a number of, I don't know how many units yet, but they're looking at some residential units there and they would, are going to request to use the density bonus under our downtown overlay district. So that is, would require, in addition to a site plan, a special permit, it would require a memorandum agreement or development agreement between the town and the developer. Um, so by both these projects coming in together, the thought was that it would be advantageous to both boards to have a representative or two representatives from each board negotiate the host community agreement, which is strictly for the delivery of the marijuana. Um, and at the same time, do the development agreement so that everything was spelled out in terms of units and how it would be done, sort of similar to the way we did with Maynard Crossing when we did the agreement, the development agreement earlier. So a lot of this stuff was already taken care of. My personal thought is that because the both boards are going to be working closely, it's better to have the communication and have building, you know, of consensus and so that we, because both are going to be involved significantly in the projects and it's such an important location and it can be, I think it can be a game changer. So anyway, that's what, if, if that's what's been requested are two of, two of you guys to come help.
And, and Bill, I want, is there a way, I want, because I, I I think all members here have, would have really good input into that process. I know that Bill Crenshaw has, has a lot of depth and knowledge when it comes to the ties with that, to the housing production plan.
Right.
Great experience. Bob's looking at the river, river front in the corridor, you know, so I just, you know, I is, is there ways to get input from this board during the process or is this a working group that works separately?
I think I, I would imagine the way it's going to work is that the working groups would kind of hash the general blueprint out and then report back to the regular board for input. But I think that would have to be done in open session, you know, whereas the two working group would be off, offline, two members from the board. But I would think that would be the best because we, particularly this board where everybody has everybody has a little bit different you know, contribution they can bring to it. So we could, I mean, I mean, and that's in development. Jim, Jim has been experienced with all the phases of the negotiations in the past or the stuff and so on. And Natalie is in with the other Community Preservation Committee and these where we're probably we're gonna have some considerations there as well. Conservation, as you said, with Bob and of course Bill with, with housing and, and also select board experience with.
So my, my, my thought on this was in general, I'd like to make sure that we're, you know, I don't want to overload any one member. So I see that, you know, Bob and Bill and Jim have assignments and I know Annette's still getting up to speed, but maybe, maybe in the time and that, do you feel comfortable? Not necessarily with this particular item, but do you feel, you feel like you're up to speed now where you can start contributing to different efforts like that?
Yes.
And this time, that's why I want to check with Natalie first though, because Natalie has other commitments, but I know there's, there's not necessarily a special assignment that Natalie's working on. So Natalie, I wanted to see if you wanted to participate in this.
What's the timeline for this working group, Bill? What's your estimate? I, I mean, obviously there's no way of knowing exactly, but I'm just wondering in terms of CPC and my life.
Oh my God, because I don't have a lot of control on this one. As, you know, I don't know exactly. My guess is that we haven't received, I haven't received any plans or anything for, you know, of site plan level or anything like that yet. Now Julia can probably, because she's already worked with them on, on one's component of the project and perhaps you can give the board a little bit more of an update on what you guys did with conservation and where you are with them.
Yeah, so, so you will be seeing them before we even get to, you know, the development agreement and all of those things. Because they did come before conservation, they plan on taking the suburban glass building, the right-hand side, the, at the end, there's like a koi pond down there. They're taking a portion of that building and actually reconstructing it to build a two-story building. So they came to us in conservation to do that and, you know, they're calling it phase one. But as you guys know, when, when it comes to permitting, you have to kind of, you can't really look too far ahead because we don't know what's going to happen. So we permitted just that second story, that two-story building, basically because they're staying in the same footprint, nothing is changing from a conservation side. As long as you don't go out, we don't care if you go up. So they went through that, they have their conservation permit. Now from a we, actually Bill and I were just discussing this today, they will need a special permit because it's a non-conforming, pre-existing, pre-existing, non-conforming structure that they are building the second story on. And it also will most likely trigger a site plan and design review. And now that's only for this, what they're calling phase one, which is this structure, they basically want to put an office on top of the warehouse. What phase two and three are, you know, I think they kept that very vague to me as conservation, because the conservation permitting that goes into the next phases that they're talking about will be intense, similar to, to what we have going on at one fifteen summer, you know, it's a, it's a pretty intense NOI that you have to do when you're building right next to the river. And the building is actually, part of the building is built on top of the retaining wall. From like a structure standpoint, it's going to be a lot to get that down and to rebuild. But what I have heard from them is that they, they do plan on, now I don't know if they own the comic book store, I'm pretty sure it's just two wall fam and then it loops around that tiny building into two, eh, four and six Powder Mill. Because the last lot, the last parcel is actually just a parking lot. It's a very weird, if you look, how they split that up. So I, I know that they were, they had one big plan before that they had brought to the select board and it doesn't seem like they're going to be doing that now. So who knows what, what phase two will look like. But at least, you know, you'll be involved with, with the beginning and maybe get a glimpse at what they have in mind when you start the special permit process.
So, so for this working group, are we expecting like monthly meetings for how many months or bi-monthly meetings, Bill and Julia? How many?
Well, the last working group we, we did was, let's see, it was Bill, me, and I can't remember who else was with us. Forgive me if I, if I admitted somebody, but, and we would try to meet, I think, bi-weekly or weekly. You know, I mean, if you if you know what you're dealing with, we know what the project in general is. You know, I think it could be done in a few meetings probably, but right now, I don't know exactly what it is.
Well, Natalie, doesn't sound like there's much of an answer to.
No, I'm sorry Natalie, I don't.
It's, it's, it's your call Natalie. If not, we have lots of members that are, you know, really great at this stuff. So I.
Your confidence in me, but I think at this point, I'm just gonna say not right now.
Okay. Yep, perfectly fine. Bob, Bill, Jim, what do you guys think? You know, I think.
I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, it sounds like there's only one project so far and that's the pot shop and that MOA is whatever, you know, it's pretty standard operating stuff. I'm a little confused as to why we're thinking, we're talking a D O D development agreement without even anybody talking about phase two or whatever that is.
Yeah, well, that, yes, that you hit the nail on the head, Bill. And that's the reason that my understanding is that the select board, and again, I'm not positive, I'm not, I can't speak for them, but this is my understanding, on, is wants to be sure that if they issue a host community agreement for the pot delivery shop that they have, that the, the owners have control and can develop the property adjacent in a way that benefits the town using the downtown overlay district criteria. So, in other words, I think they, that would weigh very heavily on whether they issued an HCA, depending on how the, what development agreement accompanied it. So for example, and I'm not saying this is you know, this is what is, but perhaps one could be tied to the other where if something doesn't happen here, it doesn't happen here. If you, so that's kind of what I'm thinking. But I, um.
It's just weird. I mean, nothing's gonna happen on the non-pot part of that parcel for it'll be a year before they get all the sign-offs between planning board and cons comm because of where they are.
Oh, sign-offs perhaps. Yeah, yeah, that could be. But, but I guess.
Through a development agreement, if you don't know what the project looks like.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And, and on the other hand, though, maybe you shape it with. Yeah, I, I would agree with that. And, and on the other hand, though, maybe you shape it with a development agreement too. You know? Um, but, but my, my takeaway, Bill, is that. I think the. They select board would prefer having. Security of knowing what else is going to be part of that project before they commit to the. Post community agreement. And I, I think that. We know now, all of us have been through downtown overlay district stuff. We know what kind of things would be. Appropriate for permitting such a project and as for mitigating such a project. And this would be a way to ensure that there's a, a nexus between the two. And it might be, honestly, if this worked well. If this worked well and we got the project we wanted and everybody was, you know, maybe it's a good way to do it, you know, I don't know. Um, and like I said, it's hard if I don't have, you know, it, not that I have control over. Our stuff, but I know what's coming, you know, and, and, and I don't necessarily know.
Is there affordable housing in this?
But, well, there can have to be. Well, if you're going with density, if you're asking for.
Process that takes a long time and. That better be an early action item for them.
It would have to be a very early action item and it not, it's not a question of, of course, it, it's a question of. How much of an affordable component depending on how many units there are. But if you're asking for a density bonus, that's, that's one of the um. Obligations. That we would spell out in the development agreement. Now, if they're having six units, you know, obviously it's different than if they're having twelve units, but. But yeah, oh no, absolutely. And. Formal housing, I don't see. You know, we, we have, at this point, I've had a few people, very few balk about it. But. What we're offering for the most part, people I, I, that I've dealt with, you know, they, they understand that and that's the trade-off and you're getting the density bonus.
I'm, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about the logistics. I mean, you can talk. About what needs to go into a development agreement, but I mean, there's no way. You can do the development agreement in this calendar year. Just because there's no project to write about in the development agreement. You can, you can talk points, but you can't.
So hold on, hold on, hold on. I, 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 I agree. I think it's a great discussion. What I want to do though is the select board has asked for this and I, I do want to find, I don't want to spend too much time debating it because. We're good at this and we're, we're really good at it. Um, but I do want to find an appointee. And then. Get the appointee and then we discuss with the select board these challenges that we see from our point of view. Does that make sense? Because I feel like we all understand these things and I hear Bill Crenshaw speak and I'm like, yeah, it makes complete sense, but I'm not the one that needs to hear. So I guess the question is maybe Bill or Bob. What do you, what's your, what this, I don't fully understand the level of effort, but are either of you interested? Um, Bill, it sounds like you may think this is wheel spinning, so maybe you want to not participate.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, you know, I, I mean, it's always interesting. So that's what I like, but you know.
And Bob, I know this may have a river, the, the power to power corridor connection, so. Uh, if that is. Worthy of, of, of an advantage here for us to have that, that level of engagement too on this topic. What do you think?
Um, so for me to participate, I see it as a, a good. Opportunity to, to learn the details of how things work. So I, if Bill doesn't want to do it, I'm happy to, to do it. If Bill wants to do it, then that, that's fine too.
All right, Bill, it's, it's your call if you, if you participate in this.
You're gonna be there and, you know, I like Bob's focus on the river, so I think that's a great pair that we could bring to them.
Okay, that's great. That's a, that's good advice. I like that. So then, Bill, it sounds like Bob and I will be the members.
Okay.
And hopefully through, through this process to, um, you know, Bill Crenshaw, your concerns of, of. You know, the vagueness of what's going on. I think that's kind of a way of using the working group. As sort of like a pre-application of like, let's get an idea of what they're doing and, and make sure that the, the future designs are. Are going in the right direction because things are so vague right now and they keep changing phases. They're like, oh, we're gonna do phase one and then phase two and now it's like. Three phases and four phases. So I think that that's another thing that this left board would want to see is just like. We like that you're taking into consideration all of these design things, but they're kind of, we need to, we need to pull them back in and focus.
Yeah, and, and while. Cons comm can segment, they're looking at projects, planning board can't. So.
Yeah. Exactly.
So Bill and Julia, you have your answer.
I have. I have my draftees, two draftees.
Thank you. Um, all right, so, so that, that covered the, covered the working group appointments.
Thank you, guys.
Again, just for room through assignments, Bob is still looking, looking to support the effort on the um, to work with Bill Nimsor on the. Uh, Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. Jim is going to be working with Bill on any potential uh, possibilities with the Mill and Main property. Um, Natalie's finishing up some other working groups so, so that she can um. Participate in eight, eight, eight ADUs and other, other items, I believe. Um, and, and then that sounds like, and that's up to speed and ready to, to participate in these types of activities. So Nanette, you're, you're next. We're gonna find a nice special project for you. Is that okay?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, good. So I feel like we have a nice balanced approach. So thank you all for, for, for that for me. Um. Um, Bill Crenshaw and um, Bill Windsor and Brad, uh, can we turn to the home occupation amendment? And how can I help with this discussion?
Well, I, I, I can start a little bit and then I'll turn it over to Bill Brad. We had a, 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 a. Before I went on vacation, we had a meeting and. Um, we. I don't say that we rebooted, but we, 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 we went over, we had a really good meeting and basically we wanted to. Rethink our approach. Based on some of the input that we got um. Both at the um, the MAP, the, not the MAPC meeting, the um. Or the select board meeting and the um. You know, some letters and comments and surveys. Um, and I loaded all those up. So when, when uh, Bill and Brad, if they have anything they want to say specifically, um. There are results that uh, Bill sent along today for the survey and there's some interesting stuff in there. And also some comments. But um. We haven't met, obviously, uh. For the last two weeks or so and I um. We're hesitant to, to, to share drafts yet of the bylaw and it's a good thing as. They both scolded me a couple of months ago when I talked about sending it out and we've totally changed it since then and they were right. But I do have a, a new draft that I did uh. Uh. Actually on the plane home yesterday, a lot of it. Um, so I'm gonna send that around to Bill and Brad. For input and then I'm thinking that we're gonna hopefully we generate some, um. Curious to hear what we get for comments tonight and maybe we can incorporate that. And then um. We'll go ahead and, and um, look that over, but I, I think what would help. Um, me now, um. And I won't speak for Bill and Brad because I'm gonna ask them to speak, but, but you know, hear what everybody's thoughts and takeaways were from the um. The session we had um. At the beginning of the month too. But uh, Bill, do I, um. You want to talk a little bit and mention your, talk about the survey too? I can share that too.
Um, yeah, sure. I mean, on um, board docs, there's a uh. The home occupation survey results and uh. I, I find it interesting reading, um, both for the, the three questions, one on um, you know. What would be a compatible use and then the other question, what would be not a compatible use and then the general comments at the end. So. When you get a chance. It makes a interesting reading. Um. I think the um. The, the specific things that they mentioned as compatible uses and not compatible uses are. Actually a pretty good list for us when we're working on these ideas to. Run over all, check out all those uses and see how they fit into our, our potential uh, bylaw because uh, there are some interesting ones in there. Some easier than others, but uh. We really need to be able to address all of them one way or another in, in any future bylaw change. So it's just something to uh. Cruise on and actually if we're looking at this page. Dogs were not well-received in general, so just keep that in mind. But uh. Yeah, um, other than that, I mean, it's just. We just posted it, so it's something to look at sometime. Um, nothing we really have to do with tonight. Um, two other things I'd like to touch on though, one is. On Monday, ZBA is having a couple. Uh, or having at least one.
One.
Home occupant. Uh. Uh, ZBA, I don't know, permit, special permit request. So. I think that would be a fascinating to, to watch that discussion. See how that goes because uh, I expect it will cover a lot of the issues that we'll need to address more clearly in the, in the zoning bylaw changes. So I'm looking forward to learning that discussion.
And then the following ZBA meeting, we're gonna have another one that's gonna be interesting.
Oh, okay, that's good.
And, and completely different.
Ah, all right.
So.
And then the only other thing I wanted. Talk about tonight was. I want to give everybody a quiz. Because. The general. Approach to. Um. The home occupancy, home occupation changes is, one, let's make sure people understand that they're just like, you know, working from home because of COVID. That's. Not even covered in this, don't worry about it. But two, we have to understand that. Um, there's different levels of activity that. Uh, we'll have to be thinking about and some activity levels would be, you know, fine, just go right ahead and do it. Some are, no, probably never. And then some are, well, sure, but let's take a look, let's do a special permit, maybe there are conditions. So. To that end, I just. Posted a little. Quiz for everybody on the board doc. So can you bring that up, Bill?
Yep. Let's see here. Give me a second here, a question from, there is. The query, that's what we call, I called it a query.
Yeah.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah. That's simple. It, it's. Five questions, but it gets into the, the issues that we'll have to wrestle with of, you know, level of activity. And so. You know, I'm looking at this, I like, okay, case number one, you have a music teacher. He gives occasionally, he gives a personal lesson every week, right? From my standpoint. We shouldn't really be worrying about that. They should just be allowed to do that. But then on the second one, it's like, well. They're doing lots of lessons every week, not just a few. And it's like, well, where's the line?
Hmm.
And then. You know, number three is, well, it's only five lessons, but there's a whole lot of people. At once. And is that aligned? Because you know, one person at a time. The car parks in the driveway, eight people at a time, maybe not. And then the other, the bottom two are. You know, okay, we're always thinking about single-family neighborhoods, but what if we're talking about a music teacher who's in a eight-unit condo or something? Does that make a difference to us? Maybe? And then the last one, it's like, well, what if it wasn't a nice little piano recital? It was tuba lessons. And you know, does that make a difference? Right? So.
Bagpipe.
Yeah, bagpipe, there you go. So I mean, something, could be something. So. Um, that's just the. General thoughts here, but um. I'm gonna put Bob on the spot. So Bob, how would you fill, fill this out? Number one would be by right, not allowed or special permit, maybe with some. Conditions?
So you're asking today under the rules?
No. How, how you, how the, what would be in the best interest of the town? It's always. Forget about today's rule, but you know, if we were to re, if we redo the zoning law, bylaws to be in the best interest of the town as a whole. What, what would we hope that the zoning bylaws do for? Condition number one.
Well, so let's see, if you're um. I. I would allow it by special permit. And my, that would be my view. And the reason for that is. Um, if you're given drumming lessons. You know, that may not be compatible with, you know, your neighbors if you're in a building with them.
Okay, I like it. It sounds like you're a special permit for most everything. I mean, are you a no, absolutely not on anything?
Well, I tend to like the special permit because I, I, I like at least. Um, I like the opportunity for notice to the neighbors. And then if nobody comments, you know, or cares, you get your special permit, but if somebody does comment or care. And the concerns can be heard and addressed with conditions.
Okay.
That's my general way of thinking about it.
All right. Uh. Let me do one other person. Chris, where are you on this? Case number one, by right, not allowed, maybe a special permit?
I mean, are, we're assuming there's no noise. Violations, no, no noise or, we don't have a noise ordinance, so do we?
No, well, you're, you're touching.
Sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying to get into a little too deep here and maybe, so I'll just answer. Um. Uh, I, I would say. You know, without a lot of consideration. I don't mind the first one. I, maybe that's a by right. Uh, the second one's definitely special permit and I'm between, on the third one, I mean, between not allowed and special permit. And the reason I'm thinking not allowed for the third one is that. That's a lot of, lot of, a lot of energy at one time, each student to a particular area at one time. Um, you know, that seems like a party. Uh, so that, that doesn't seem quite in line with it, it being a um, second. So. Uh, I, I struggle with that one. So does that help?
Yep, no, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
I like that. We gotta do this with. All the uses. So, you know, it's like, damn.
Yeah.
This will be interesting.
Well, you, you know, the thing is, the, the thing is, it's a great. This is great because the first thing that, well, I think if I'm not mistaken, what Bob was saying, you know, a music teacher. It's not a question of the, the. Five individual lessons so much it is, is it's the potential for a disturbance from the type of music or the sound with it. On number two. We're twenty-five lessons per week, then you're impacting traffic. And that could end up being a concern in addition to the sound. Or disturbance and so on with, with the third. So my question to you guys from this, because I think this is really. Good exercise. My question is this, let's. Assume for the minute. Number one teacher was a, a bagpipe teacher that just was teaching in a neighborhood and it was racket. At all hours with the five individual lessons. Per week. Why? Wouldn't? Since they don't have, let's assume they don't have a special permit now, why wouldn't we treat it as a code enforcement case initially? Because all of a sudden we've heard about, you know, hey, the bagpipes going all hours of the day. Um. Why wouldn't the, the most simple way to do would say, okay, it's, it's complaint-based and now we've had a complaint about noise. Uh, code enforcement officer, which is the building commissioner or designate, goes over to the. Uh, location and says, um. I think, you know, this is, this is a. A, a code violation and you have two choices, you're either gonna stop this or you have to go get a special permit from, in this case, the zoning board. Music teacher goes to the zoning board with the bagpipe. And says, okay, I want to teach these five lessons a week. Maybe they say, okay, we can do it from, you know, two to four. Monday to Friday or something like that. Or. The, the uh. Instructor may say, you know, I don't, I want to appeal the building commissioner's determination and they appeal it to the um. The zoning board and then whatever happens, happens. But the point is, we don't have to react to every music teacher with five. We don't have to react to every music teacher with five individual lessons per week until there's an issue. Because i- i- if we. I mean, the the idea of noticing people, I get that. But we also know that we're trying to be. If you read the comments uh i- in the survey, we're trying to be. Fair to everybody, and there's some statements and they're like, you know, this would ruin a neighborhood, and of course, nobody, the planning board, the last thing that. Anybody's trying to do is ruin anything. On this, but. On the other hand, people that own, that own a house, and maybe they're only teaching a, I don't know, a. Low volume instrument. You know, they could be subject to this whole public hearing process, so that's my question, and the reason I ask that is because that's how I kind of rearranged. My my draft of the bylaw with that thinking like that, and it may maybe totally wrong, but. What do you guys think about that approach?
I think we have to figure out if we have an enforceable voice ordinance in town.
Well, let's assume for the discussion we did.
Now, well, that. That focuses things in a different direction, sure.
That would be very handy.
Can can we hear from other board members in this?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from everybody.
Yeah, now, Annette, Jim, Natalie, what are your thoughts?
Um, I can tell you that. I work in a school and we do music. And the music teacher comes in, he is in the cafeteria. And he's playing the banjo. And the noise is very loud. So. They'll go into the music room where it's. Soundproof, and there isn't any noise, so if one, if if someone comes to my house and I'm gonna teach them the piano. And I have someone next door, they're gonna hear it and they will complain. Because I know that that when when that banjo is going. With five kids around there, even with one child, it is, it is very disturbing when you're trying to teach. Or even if you, I mean, it's very loud. So. I think that depending on the location, the home, the room. Or having. Maybe having an inspection, you know, inspection of the room or having it soundproofed, if they wanted to do a business, if they were surviving or doing very well with the business. That may work. But it would be, I would say. It would be allowed by special permit with conditions. If that makes any sense.
So, but, and that, in in the scenario where I. Presented it like where where the banjo player. Wouldn't. Be required to get a special permit. Unless there was a problem, you would want to be proactive and. I just go ahead and say, I require a special permit?
So so you're saying, so here's what I, here's how I'm I'm hearing this, so. The music teacher is gonna have uh individual lessons five times per week. And four, the children don't get out of school till after. They probably, it'll probably three to five. During dinnertime, they do it in the evening. Or on an early release Wednesday where. The children get out earlier and they'll go to their music lessons. So, I would think that. The um. That home. At that time. They'd have to be. Allowed by a special permit. I go with them. Bob. Where's it go, Bob? I, that's how I feel, because I I I work with children during the day and with music, with the music teacher right there. It is loud, so if you have drums, that's even louder, so they'd probably have to put in a soundproof area. But. It would have to be claimed first, wouldn't you think, that's, you know, let it go on for. A few months until there was a complaint, and then then you would allow a special permit with conditions?
Well, the, I I'm just, I'm kind of just trying to pick everybody's brain on it, because I was saying that then. You know, i- if there's a complaint. And it's treated like a a a noise complaint or a code complaint, then they're required, the 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 uh. Building commissioner just determines, yeah, this is gonna need a special permit, because you've got the drums going there, it's five o'clock at dinnertime and. You're, you know, every night. It it's going through the neighborhood, on the other hand, if a kid is in there with a zither or a triangle or something. You know, and and there's, there's. Absolutely, you know, we're learning how to. You know, make puppets dance or something like that, and there's no. Impact, I would hate. No, neither phrase, it doesn't, I hate it, I think. It would really clog up the process to make. That person go, you know, for a special permit, that's my, you know, um, so. They're not all equal, and that was probably, that could probably be the case with a number of different. Um, that uh different topics or whatever, you know, whether it was food preparation, whether it was. I don't know, whatever, you know.
Well, what, uh, in food preparation, I know it has to go to the Board of Health, and they come into your home and make sure that that you. It meets certain requirements, you'd have to have two sinks, you'd have to have, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm not sure how it will work with. A music teacher. With the windows open.
Right.
Or or. Possibly going in and saying, okay. You can, I know that you can soundproof a room. I think that if they soundproof a room, if they wanna make it a lucrative business. That would be with a special permit. With conditions. Special per permit conditions.
Yeah, it would.
Guys, can we, can we hear from um Jim and Natalie in this too? I just, I wanna make sure we have time to.
Yeah.
And and Annette's feedback is great, I just wanna make sure we have time for other opinions and thoughts, do you have anything to add?
Well, I I'd like to add into here if I can. Uh, two or three comments. First of all, I sent a email to both Chris and Bill Nemser about this. Uh, general topic back several weeks ago, and uh. Uh, if you, uh, either one of you wanna make it available to the whole board, I have no problem with it whatsoever, but. I don't think we should be trying to figure out every single. Name for a home occupation or home business, we should be setting up a criteria. That says any business has to uh conform to these standards. And that could be a variety of them, uh, employees, parking, offsite, onsite, number of vehicles, blah, 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 and all. Way down the line, noise could be uh handled very simply, I think. Um, the same way that we did up at one twenty-nine. Uh, Parker Street, and that's by a decibel count. We can say that uh an instrument um or or music or whatever should not exceed a certain decibel count. That's easy enough to uh to. Check on by the building inspector or somebody else, uh, and and because otherwise. Noise to me might be not noise to you or vice versa, and I don't think we can. Uh, uh, give the billing inspector the task of trying to figure out whether it's noisy for me and not noisy for you or noisy for him. Or whatever, he has to actually hear or see or uh know what the via is, uh. Um, definitely see the violation or hear the violation in order to. Uh, do something with it, I've talked to him about it, and he can't just take. Your uh complaint or my complaint uh and say, well, it was too noisy. When he gets up, there, there's no noise, he can't determine that there was a validity to the com- to the complaint. So those are my feelings, I think that we have to attack it in a different way. Thank you.
Thank, thanks, Jim, um, I did forward that email to the working group, and from my understanding. Um, Bill and Brad have been also thinking and working in terms of those guidelines, uh, Bill, feel free to clarify, um. Crenshaw, if you want.
I mean, that's what we're doing, but that's what we're doing here, we're not gonna write something that says music teachers with five students. And that's aligned with bylaw, we're trying to figure out intensity levels and what difference it makes to people. So.
Yeah, so good, good feedback, Jim, and it sounds like the the working groups is aligned with with your thoughts, they're just using this as an example to gauge our temperature.
Mm-hmm.
On different levels of intensity. Um, Nat Natalie, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Um. Sorry, uh, in terms of intensity, I mean, I think, like everyone else said, it's a matter of. I want there to be recourse, right, for neighbors who are bothered by the thing. By whatever is going on, be it music lessons or whatever else, um, I was just reading through the survey results. And I know that that's not like, you know. Um, a lot of people said, anything that can be done on a computer, I'm totally on board with, and anything else, I'm not on board with. And I understand why they're saying that, but at the same time, like, that very distinctly gives white collar workers an opportunity to have a home business. And no other type of businesses to exist, and I find it. Kind of horrifying, actually, that people, I get what they're saying, they don't allow noisy, smelly, distracting things, but like, don't say that. Because that's. I'm not on board with that, so. Um. Yeah, that's my only thought.
Chris, if I may?
You may, um, I was just making sure board, board members had. Um, I wanna spend the time on that, it's really Bill Crenshaw's to run, yeah, Bill, go ahead, Bill.
Um, so like, one of the things that I'm concerned about is like. The town carrying the burden to enforce. And to me, it's almost easier to say, if you wanna have a home occupation, then you have to come in and get permission. And it can be really easy. For a lot of things, rather than the notion that the. Building inspector is gonna go out and enforce, and if you're dealing with a situation where somebody's not cooperative, then. You know, you're, you're, you're just. Eating up town resources for that. Um, the noise issue is different, you know, for something like Parker Street where you're measuring noise at the property boundary. That's one thing, but when you're. Measuring noise like between units in a building, that's a whole different thing, and I don't know how you do that. So. I, if if I felt comfortable about. You know, um, that we're not gonna overwhelm the building inspector with a lot of complaints about. People calling on their neighbors because they're unhappy with what's going on. You know, I I could see letting some of these out, but on the other hand, I thought it's just easier to bring them in. And the easy ones are just gonna be dealt with really quickly, and, you know, you could do it. You know, with real simple conditions, like setting restrictions on hours and that sort of thing, so that's, that's where I was coming from.
And the the very question of all this, can't, I can't help but. I know that this is just an example for sure. But you think about the tuba player who gives tuba lessons, and by the way, tubas are beautiful, I think that flutes can be much more annoying. Um. You know, the the tuba guy who just plays tuba and he practices for six hours a day, and his neighbors hate him. And then he takes on little Tommy down the street who learned how to play the tuba, and suddenly. He can have rules enforced against him, right, like, it's just, I'm not saying that that, it's just interesting to think about with no noise. No current noise regulations, right, we're really. It's a tricky, it's a tricky business, here.
I I second that last part, Natalie, I have the same question, like, what's the difference between someone just playing and someone under this scenario, this example?
And the point is, is that there there is a difference, because we have no, you know, we have nothing to do with the guys who's just practicing, but it does inform how I feel about it, right? Because, you know. And I think it should inform how. I don't know, I think about some of my hobbies that I do for fun, that my neighbors are probably like, wow, that's really annoying, but guess what, it's just my hobby, so I'm allowed to do it.
Well, you you know, it. It goes also. If you'd look at the the idea of. A home occupation as. Strictly impact to the surrounding neighborhood, and and going back to the three examples, the music teacher examples. See, I would say those two and three are totally different, the one in that they generate a traffic impactful one, for example. Um, but. Here's the, here's the other question that I found when writing the bylaw, and this kind of was my go-to. When I, when I. Was trying to figure out a a better way to approach it, like my colleagues suggested. Why? Um. Why not? Use a phrase such as typically associated with a residential neighborhood? So, the tuba player, for example. Alright, maybe, maybe a tuba player at three in the morning is not typical for a regis- for a a residential neighborhood. You know, while playing during the day. You know, might be annoying, but it would be something that you would normally find, or you could find in a residential neighborhood. This is just lawn mowing. Chainsawing, uh, uh, weed whacking, uh. Car sounds, somebody revving up a car. Um. Is that? You know, are are we taking to into account what's? Normally found in a in a residential neighborhood? Because some of the, some of the comments said, I don't want anything anywhere, not even the computer thing, you know, it's like, no, there's just, you know, and it was just stuff like this, this will. The value of the community or whatever the case is. What about? Establishing, I mean, there's, these are residential districts, these are accessory. Secondary uses to the residents, that's established like in the first paragraph of. Of. Any proposed. Or any draft that we've done so far. That, so that's clear, we're not talking about mixed use, where there's a commercial, so I mean, we're talking about residential. So what's typical in a residential neighborhood, if a neighbor, I mean, I'm kind of a noisy guy one day a week with my little hobby. Um. And I I may make noise for an hour or two a week in the middle of the afternoon on a Saturday or something. I would expect if I was making noise. You know. At a, at a more uh consistent level and 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 at a more consistent basis and at a um. Less appropriate time, people would be furious with me, I would think. But, you know. So when I go out there and I weed whack, uh, you know, at nine o'clock in the morning. But I'm also. You know, have a business where I go somewhere else and. At lawns, you know what I'm saying, in other words, what's typical? With a residential neighborhood, because you can't have just somebody that just says, oh, I don't want any noise, I don't want my neighbor to motor lawn, I don't want them to do this, or what, I mean, of course. You know. There has to be a level of of of. Rationale. To build from.
So, uh, I'm cognizant of the time, and I wanna move on to the downtown overlay district discussion too. So I'm gonna turn it back to Bill Crenshaw, Bill Crenshaw, what else would you like from the board for this meeting, and if you could preface on what you see coming up? With our engagement?
Um, well, first, sorry, I didn't think it would take this long, um.
No, no, all good, all good, I think I'm I'm, I think it's the best use of our time, but I, you know, I I do wanna get to that other. Take as much time as you want, Bill, don't, don't.
No, no, that's good, um, certainly done for tonight, uh, I think the most important thing is actually, you know, it would do us all a lot of good to. Watch in on the uh ZBA hearings the next couple of times, because.
Mm-hmm.
There can be some interesting real life stuff, and we'll hear things that we hadn't thought about.
Yeah. Would you mind sending at least me a reminder, Bill Nemser, on that?
I will send, yes, I'll send a agenda, because now I think about it. With the next three zoning board meetings each have something completely different to do with either home occupation or trade show, so we could make it a, um. I'll make sure everybody gets a a copy about it, of, you know, how to get on it and.
And if if I could add just one more thing to the discussion, I just wanna reiterate what what Natalie said of, you know. Um, you know, just just being careful with the wording that we aren't. Um, like when we talk about a typical neighborhood, uh, you know. That we are my cognizant of equity and inclusion, um, that, you know, a typical neighborhood. In one side of town may not be the typical neighborhood on the other side of town, so, um. I just wouldn't want that any of our language to to turn into something, um. Uh, that could be construed to us being not inclusive.
I think that's well said, and um apologies to the dog barking in the background, but. The zoning regs now.
No dogs.
And my mi- my view are misogynistic. At 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 best misogynistic, and at worst, I have some other thoughts on, you know, about when they're, because they're written at a certain time. I don't wanna make, I agree with Julia. I don't want to make, I agree with Julia completely, and I don't want to make the same mistake. Um, so I, I think it's helpful to figure out how to have language that is equitable.
I know, as we move through, especially on the ZBA side, you know, the complaints that we get, some of them are, um. And, and as you saw on this, all right, some, some people just don't, we call them. In, um, one side, planting bananas, builds, uh, anything nowhere near anyone. Um, and that type of, of thought process can be really toxic when it comes to trying to make an inclusive town, so. That's, that's all I would say.
Alright, Bill, Crenshaw, anything else?
Uh, no, thank you for the time.
Alright, um, I, I assume you'll be back to us with other elements in the future?
Yes, we're regrouping and, uh. Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be a little while, but, uh, not that long.
But Jim, did you have something to share?
No, 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 thank you.
Okay, okay, great, um, I know there's, I know there's members of the public on the phone tonight, if, if anything that you hear, you would like to comment on it, you can send your comments to Bill Nzer, I am, I am going to move on from this topic though.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank Brad for his help too, he's been assisting us too from the ZBA, and.
Yeah, my understanding, Brad's been to the effort as well, so thanks, Brad. Let's see. So let's move item to the downtown overlay district review. Uh, as a reminder, this was, this was called out in the master plan for the planning board to accomplish. And so I, I feel like this will be our first discussion on it, and then I would like to have another discussion later, maybe later this spring. Um, maybe towards the end of the fiscal year, uh, to have that secondary's discussion, wrap up that discussion. And then we'll have, and then Bill and I or others can, can put, put together something in writing. That can memorialize, uh, and document our efforts for here. Um, and Bill, do you have the zone, do you have the master plan handy? If not, I can pull it up, because I just want to frame our discussion on this with the master plan.
Um, I can pull it up, if you have it handy, that's even better.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, whoever gets to it first.
Alright, I'm, I'm going. Let's see here.
This is fun.
Holy mackerel, I'm going, so I'm making myself dizzy.
Hey, uh, Bill's cheating, I'm not allowed to share.
Wait a minute, who moved it?
Just let Chris share and then he'll beat you.
Oh, oh, we got it.
So for the minutes, we're just saying that Chris won, right?
Chris won, Bill cheated.
Make sure that's in there.
Look at that, oh my god, like lightning.
Like lightning, I even had the, the proper page lined up and everything. Your pages and everything.
Alright, I'll give it, you win, I can't argue with the chair. Um, okay, let's see here. Do you, um. I'm paused. Okay, do you want to, uh, share it, Chris? Here, I'll just make it so you can.
You still have to.
I did, you got it.
Okay, got it.
DOD.
Right, so. What we're discussing. Can I like this? Is that right there? It's master plan goal H three dash one. I'll, I'll read it out loud, assess recent developments within, within the downtown overlay district to ensure this zoning tool is achieving its intended purpose as it pertains to. Uh, new paragraph apparently, housing. That's our discussion, that, I want, that's how I want to frame this discussion, we can obviously increase it. Uh, with, with other thoughts, but this is a look, I'd like to start with a look back. And I think it'll be helpful particularly from planning board members that have had longer experience, particularly. Uh, Jim and Bill, I think, has been here the longest and me and Natalie less long, but. Um, still have a few, um, hearings under our belts inside the overlay district. Um, maybe, maybe, um. Uh, Jim or Bill, would you like to give us your thoughts on like, how the dis, how the district has been working out? How, how some of the, how, you know, what projects were successful, what ones were challenging, without, you know, talking too specific about the challenges of each project, but.
I mean, it, it's interesting because. There were no projects for a long time. And frankly, the only DOD projects that have really popped up. Um. Other than by accident, um. Were a few residential ones, and I think there were like, maybe five, and. There was one interesting one that was covered by DOD, and that's, I forget the name of it, the little street out behind Town Hall. And, and McDonald was developing one of the houses there and it triggered DOD, and it's like, wow, that really wasn't the intent. And so that, to me, brings a question of the boundaries of the DOD zone and, uh, on the edges, it's a little interesting. Um, then we had the project to fill in the big hole near the bike shop there, and they put in those townhouses. And, you know, the issue came up of, you know, that's great, we filled in the hole. And we like doing that, but it's pretty plain looking. And that wasn't necessarily a hundred percent with the intent. Um, then we had a, one or two little guys down on Main Street where they redeveloped some old. Um. But were actually boarding houses practically, which, you know, they did a good job and. They pretty much met the intent of the thing, but, you know, we actually cannibalized our low income housing to get. A higher level of housing, um, which was an unfortunate byproduct, but that's just what happened with older properties. Um, and then just in general. Um, the two biggest things I see, and, and one we've been working on, one is, you know, trying to actually make sure it's talking mixed use and making sure the. Street level on the main drives is actually commercial. Um, and we've been trying to do that better with some. Uh, zoning bylaw changes, so it doesn't, the, the front, the lower level doesn't become just like a closet space full of commercial and a bunch of parking. Um, but the, the, um, second one is. As far as residential goes, when this thing was put together. The real thought was trying to make it easier for people to redevelop the upper level of existing buildings as residential. And so we got all this space downtown that's underused in the upstairs, but. The thing holding that up is not really zoning apparently, it's really the cost and it's the fire safety rules for. You know, putting in sprinkler systems, so, I don't know what the heck we can do about that, but. Frankly, that really was the original intent of the residential part of this bylaw was to work on the upper story of existing brick buildings. So that vacant or storage space could become active with housing. And that hasn't happened, hasn't happened, but it's not the fault of the DOD.
The last part. I'm thinking of the building where Emory's tomb is located. And there's upper stories there that I think have some vacancy that are commercial, is that, was that kind of the vision? For a property like that?
Yeah, absolutely, because. Um, yeah, it's really hard to rent that, and, you know, and ends up being class C minus office space or something occasionally, but, yeah, I mean, like. You know, the building, I'm in at number fourteen, I mean, you know, they can't really rent the third floor much. But if it was housing, it would be great, and. Yeah, the one that, almost any of the buildings downtown, um, the upper level is, is underused.
So that's an interesting thought, I haven't been aware of, that the DOD has been used. Maybe in a way that's been effective for some projects for sure, but that, the, that the original intent was, or vision, I would say, was something quite different. Because we've used it mostly for redevelopments, full tear downs, redevelopments, I believe, right, at least in the recent past, the last four years.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, and yeah, right, it's all been that, and, you know, when the, when the DOD was put together, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, or whenever it was, a long time. Um, you know, that just wasn't a thing then. You know, nobody was tearing down downtown buildings, they were just trying to reuse it, and they were like complaining that, that. The rules got in their way of using it because the building occupied the whole parcel and they were limited on just what they could do to make it better.
You know, but I, I think if you, if you look now at Main Street. From Town Hall, say, to, to Waltham Street, though. Every project that we've done is considerably better, it's made the area better than it was before, and I think that it's also triggered some. Additional investment by, I'd like to see a lot more, but, but some, uh, additional investment. Like, for example, the pizza place next to Town Hall, just down from Town Hall, putting on a, a new facade and interior and an exterior. Dining area and stuff like this, uh, GG's doing stuff with, uh, um, you know, they expanded and stuff like this, and. If you look down, if you walk, go down Main Street, I think that there are a few buildings now that really stand out as. I'd like to see something happen in them, but, but, but all in all. But, I think it's improved things.
Jim, um, from your experience. What, how do you think that DOD has, has worked, has it worked well, has it been challenging?
Well, I think Bill has covered a lot of the finer points, uh, we have to remember that anything and everything is driven by economics. Whatever is, we may think is, oh, this, this would be nice in this place or that place. It has to be economically feasible for the owner or developer to be able to do it, and in some cases, it just doesn't work that way. Uh, I'll take for, and, 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 and an example, uh, back about ten, fifteen years ago. Walgreen built a, a building to house their drugstore on the first floor and, uh, offices on the second. To my knowledge, that second floor has been empty for its entire life of that building. Now, could it be turned into, uh, residential use? Probably, but that's a case of economic, economics, so. We have an old town with some new, some old, everything is driven by the economics of it. And of course, the code, and some places it couldn't, you couldn't meet the proper code by putting in a residential, so. Uh, every single building we have is, uh, a unique in and of itself.
So, Chris, just a reminder about that Walgreens, thanks for that, Jim. Um, that's funny because the, the only reason they built a second floor is because the DOD massing requirements require the second floor to be built. And they knew they were never going to use it, but they had to build to that height. Because of the DOD, because the DOD is trying to make sure that pretty much everything is consistent two stories, and it's not just, you know. A little one story and then a four story and then, you know, they need a consistent alignment, so I had forgotten about that one, that's interesting. It's ten thousand square feet.
That's not used to residential right now.
Right, well, it could, yeah, and it's immaculate, I mean, that's.
Um, Jim, any, any other thoughts on some of the projects recently, how, how they've gone? What you think are, were they, were they good projects, was the DOD helpful to help those projects out?
I think in the long run, uh, Chris, uh, I'd say that for the most part, everything, uh, uh, came out pretty darn good.
Thanks, Jim. Um, Bob, Natalie and Annette, um, I think you may have a fresher perspective on this, um. Maybe Natalie first, that you, you've, you've, you've went, you've been on the board for a few of the hearings.
I always have opinions. Um, yes, well, one thing that Bill mentioned was the, uh, the actual outline of the zoning district. I do have a couple of questions about it, so I feel like as we look into this. Some of them, some of the edges seem confusing to me. Um. But maybe that's not what we need to discuss, I mean, overall, yes, I think that we've gotten a lot further with certain projects than we would have without all of those guidelines. Especially the ones, you know, specific to the asset, but specific to the, the nature of downtown, you know, that kind of stuff, so. Um. Yeah, I guess the question is just how to push it forward further, how to, you know. I hadn't even realized that that was the intent of it, Bill, because I've never, I've only been here for the newer, the teardown projects, right? So, um. I feel like. When we have either through here or whatever else I've heard about, when we've heard about places that need to update. The problem is there's always a reticence to, you know, spend the money to be able to get things up to current code. And I guess there's no real getting around that, but it's, that does seem to be. Often the issue with some of these spendier updates that are required, so, yeah, I don't know.
So one thing on the, on the, um, the lines, Natalie. Um, so that's something that I've also noticed when I first started and having the, like, my mapping and GIS background, and I go to maps first. Um, so I definitely am doing a, a bit more of a deep dive on the backend of, first, like, what, um. Making sure that all of our maps align, because some of them, something we noticed don't, um. And so getting that corrected, and then I, I would like for us to, at some point, reevaluate, um, some of them, because they do. They don't all run through, um, the parcels and, and it's very, yeah, I have, I have a lot of questions to, to, uh, a few of the, the areas that they're running through, so. Um, that is something I would. If you want to join me and, and try to figure that out.
Specifically, I know that this is very NIMBY, but in, right behind my house, there are two residences that are included in it, like, straight up single family residences. And I just don't, like, on the map, so I'm just curious, like, is that actually supposed to be there or not? And Bill, I brought this up before and you were like, we should talk about that someday, and now it's like a year later, but anyway.
Well, now's the time, um, I mean, I'm running on my list as an action item for the planning board in the department.
Well.
Review boundaries.
Yeah, well, well, we, we did find, these are, um.
And, and sorry, Bill, Bill, um, I don't, I don't want to get, do a deep dive on the boundaries right now, I want to hear, sorry. I, it is my favorite thing to cut off the ones, but, um, I, I do want to hear from, uh, planning board members on this first, Bill, is that okay? Is it okay, Bill? Bill doesn't like me right now, okay, that's alright. Um, uh, Bob and Annette, um, what are your thoughts? Maybe Bob first.
Um, well, it was, it, what Bill says is interesting that the intent was to help to facilitate redevelopment of some of the existing space downtown. And I had no idea the extent of the vacancy, you know, in those, with the third floor of those buildings. And the, um, I, I know it's wicked expensive to. Um, put in the sprinklers and, and typically when you're tripping the threshold for sprinklers, you're also. Tripping the threshold for having put in elevator and make it the building ADA accessible, so. That's what makes it just, you know, so difficult to redevelop, you know. Just the, the upper floors of those buildings, so I don't know what the answer is to that. Um, it's just, uh, you know, the cost is just prohibitive.
I'm with Bill there too, it's economic development, um, I do know that they, they are renting some of those upper units, young kids, you know. They rent the, they rent the unit, they stay, um, rent out each room out in, on Main Street. It's, is there a, I mean, it's very hard for a business or a homeowner right now to even think about. Upgrading or putting fire, uh, fire sprinklers in or an. upgrading or putting fire, uh, fire sprinklers in or an elevator into a third floor unit. So all I can think of is grant or how, you know, helping these people out and also improve the area. If we can get that. No?
Yeah, good. I, I think it's, I think you're right on Annette. Um, my silence was thinking, uh, it's not promoting.
It's mixed use. I mean,
Yeah.
People that are renting those places up there downtown, all young kids that are working in the area. And they're all pulling in their money to live there, because it is so expensive. There's got to be, there's got to be some help somewhere, but even the homeowner or the business owner.
Mass development and that has a number of programs like that. And, and I have, um, I have a number of resources for that. And if somebody's interested in it that comes in, I always do steer them to the mass development because, uh, often they're looking at either creation of some affordable units, which in this case, you know, was exactly what you're talking about. And also, uh, a reactivation of, uh, underutilized properties. So as, uh, when you know, but, but, you know, they, there, there's some work involved in applying for it, but it does, is there? I think you're absolutely right. If you told a homeowner, if we had a program where we said, okay, we can set you up with a, either, you know, a, a partial grant or assistance to install a, a sprinkler system, you know, that we made it legal. I think that would be, I would think that'd be very popular, you know, once you got the bugs ironed out of it. But yeah, mass development is the, is the big one that you're talking about. Bill, can you, you want to add to this?
Yeah, just, um, going back to your original point of, you know, we're looking at the, the ma- the master plan is this is a task for us in the master plan. And the master plan says, look at the DOD in regards to you know, what it's done for housing. And, you know, the DOD may need work on boundaries and things like that. But as far as housing goes, it's in a gross number, far more successful than anybody ever thought. Nobody thought they were going to be dropping twenty and thirty unit housing projects in the middle of downtown. So I don't like, there's anything wrong with how it's doing for housing. Okay. Any other tweaks? But as far as that master plan goes, I think we're covered.
So we're burying the lead.
Yes, I agree. I, I agree with that completely. It's just a matter of, is there a way to help people know about the different ways of using it, right? So, yeah.
So for housing, it has, just to be clear, it's, it is increased our affordable housing stock. It has increased our total number of units. Are both those correct, Bill Crincha?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Has it? And this is kind of one of those things. I'm, I'm, I'm partly in the, you know, I, I'm on the perimeter of like the field of construction safety. You know, um, when things, when things don't happen, it's hard to account for an injury not happening because of the regulation or something. So, but Bill Nemser, has, has the, has the DOD prevented other types of development for, for our housing stock at all? Like, because from your experience, when you talk to applicants, what are they, what are the challenges for doing even better?
Um, yeah, the, uh, only what I would consider serious, uh, um, you know, places where people have indicated that they have a problem with it, is what we've already discussed. We have to upgrade. Um, you know, things like, you know, for, for code, for rehabilitation of, um, you know, where either there's a contaminant or there is not a fire system or there's, um, uh, you, the elevator thing is absolutely correct. And it seems that, you know, all our stuff, our rental stuff, like it gets sucked up right away. And, and our for sale condos, we don't have that many right now, but, but they're gone. I mean, they were gone in two seconds. So I, I, I think that, um, the, the the progress that could be made is exactly what Bill was saying on the, the activating the upper floors. And like Annette made a great point there with it. You know, if we're bringing in young people, that's, that that's even a bonus, because that was a demographic that we had been, you know, our last housing production plan, we were um, we were down the decline and now that's been reversed. So I think that, yeah, it, the more, if I could come up with a, a program, like a mass development program, or maybe with the Affordable Housing Trust, um, you know, as they get, get going more and more, a program like that, and maybe there's some assistance and we could activate those upper floors. And again, these are all people downtown that are helping our businesses too, which I know, I'm not, I think we all know that, but, but it's, it's a, um, it's a really cool thing, I think.
Our criteria for reviewing special permits for the DOD is about, does it add, is it in line with the character and does it have had all these values? Um, is there, and I'm just wondering if there's something, Bill, maybe this isn't for you to chew on, Bill Nemser, but maybe there's something that to look at with that, that can help encourage development of the upper floors, if we tie it back to meeting the criteria somehow.
That's a good point. I mean, there's maybe there's some, some incentive that we haven't thought of, you know, maybe.
I, I want to align incentives. You know, if the goal is to develop those upper floors, maybe we look at what our zoning does specifically say, so that is applicants are incentivized to doing that type of work. I don't know. I'm spitballing, completely spitballing. You haven't thought through it at all, but just, um, just.
So I have a, um, if, if everybody'd like, I have a, um, one of my pamphlets on upper floor redevelopment and challenges of it. And I could send it around. If everybody liked that, I'll send it around. But I.
Pamphlet for everything, don't you?
Wow.
Wow.
Specific pamphlet, yes.
I love it. It's amazing.
I think the other, oh, sorry, Chris.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think the other success story too, that, um, is, is really lighting. Um, and, you know, my husband grew up in, in Acton and hung out in Maynard and said it was dead at, you know, at night, like it the, it, all the stores were, it was very dark after, you know, the sun went down because of it was mostly all businesses. And now that we do have more housing in the DOD, and I think also what you guys have done to the, the businesses that have come in and, and requiring lighting, um, has really made it more inviting. So it's, it's that chicken or the egg. People don't want to live in a place that's, that's dark, but at the same time, you can, you need the people to be able to get it light. So I think that that's, that's been a real, um, success story for, for both CBA and planning is is getting, you know, a, a demographic of people that we aren't just a five o'clock shut downtown, but we, we do have a life a, a group of people and, and a life after five o'clock.
Um, my, so my thought on this is, I, I love this discussion. I love everything that's been said. One thing I'll add is I'm curious how the parking requirements, how they connect with encouraging the development of housing units. Um, and one reason I bring that up is that I find that reflecting on our decisions in the last four years, there's always been a lot of discussion, how many parking spots, where should they go, how they should be oriented, what are the logistics around that? And I'm curious if the, if, if, if those types of parking challenges could be taken off the table with, and solved in a different sort of realm or area. I, I mean, you know, because I feel like we're talking, we have parking for properties. Like, we all know that the best use of land in an area overall would be more central parking, of course, you know, and I'm not suggesting that we have a parking garage, but if there was a parking garage, um, then, you know, properties can be used more for housing development and less for cars. I don't, you know, definitely not fully thought, thought through. Also, places like Cambridge, and I know we're not Cambridge, they require parking underground so that the development occurs above ground for people. So, Bill, no, Bill Crincha.
Yeah, just, um, two thoughts on, on the parking. One is to remind us that we did actually redo the zoning bylaw for parking requirements on residential to make it, uh, instead of just two for everything, you know, we took into account, um, bedrooms and stuff and studios wouldn't need much. So we haven't really seen what that result is, but at least we're trying to get there. Um, now on the other swing of the pendulum, I would point out that the, the, you know, there is now residential property that we allowed on Summer Street, they're now parking in the municipal lot. And they're chewing up day spaces used by commercial businesses. So I mean, it's never an easy answer.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't know what the answer is, but I'm curious. I'm curious if there's a way to re, rethink, not just for parking for a property, but to rethink the whole parking that may help with housing production on a, on a development of a special permit. That's all. Because we, when we have a special permit come in, we're talking about parking for that property itself. So, and I would rather have the conversation about parking overall every time. And we always try to do that, like whoever, whoever the brothers come in, I'd rather have the conversation with parking overall, you know, instead of just parking on that property. So, because like, people, the interaction with the property itself, with cars, is that people park everywhere. And they interact with that property, not just parking on that property. So that's, that's, that's the only reason, that's the big reason I'm bringing it up. I don't have an answer, but.
Well, if you, if, you know, you, we, when we had this discussion a while ago, right before we did the, uh, the last amendments to the downtown elderly district parking, you know, why co-mingle good design with a perceived need of, of parking if the developer feels that that's adequate? What do, you know, if, if they're parking in a place they shouldn't be parking, they should get a ticket. And that's the end of it. It's not our problem. But if we don't want to see of parking, because we already have, you know, ample parking or whatever the case is, and you make a good design, why should we sacrifice that if it's not our issue? If they're taking, if they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, they should get a ticket or be towed or whatever the deal is. But, um, we just, we, we, our projects look pretty darn good. I think the last ones, uh, I don't think it's a downtown. And if, 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 if we don't want them parking out back in a, um, out back to CVS or something, uh, you know, then, right?
Keep in, keep in mind that, um, you know, a lot of the residential parking we see right now because of our seasonality with parking passes and the winter parking. Um, you know, those who, who park on the street are currently parking municipal lots, but they have to come and get a permit, um, and a parking pass to do that. So that's, that's some of, I know that's not all the residents. Um, but I know that is some of the residents who are on some, in the summer street, um, that they mostly park on the, on the street during half the season and then have to go in and get, um, get a, a permit, but.
And if I could add one more thing, if, um, if, if we, if the town looks to implement complete streets around the area, that will probably alleviate the, the amount of car traffic and parking required for people that are more local, they would have other options, transport options, getting into town. If, and I think complete streets would lower the demand for car parking probably in town. So I think it's connected to complete streets too. I don't fully know, but it's just my guess is that this is all tied together. Um, and I, you know me, I've said complete streets a couple of times. I do want to continue to emphasize complete streets. And I think those are my thoughts for tonight at least. Um, I plan to, um, I, I've been taking notes. I'm gonna plan to memorialize this discussion with, with my notes, you know, just, just an email or a memo. And, and then I'd like to discuss further. Um, so we had time to reflect on it, maybe, maybe do a little digging on a couple of items, discuss further. What I have on my list is to look at boundaries as noted by a number of our board members, um, to, to tie this, try to see if we can look at, you know, what the, the best way I could put it was the, what's the future?
Oh, okay. Love you, Dad. Bye.
Um, the, this, the future economics, like how do, how does this, how do the future economics plan to all this? That that's just the thematic element I heard. Um, I, I hear, you know, I'm hearing a lot, maybe not specifically, but a lot of discussion about, you know, how to have data for that or what's the mapping look like. So I think it'd be really helpful for me to understand better, having better mapping tools, better analytics of understanding properties. You know, how many properties have second floors that are underutilized that we're looking to, with supportive of? How many? How many projects downtown? How many properties in general? Like, but I think we need data mapping and analytics on this. Now, I know Julia was mentioning that and I hundred percent support all efforts towards data analytic, data analytics and mapping. Um, zoning to encourage upper floor developments was mentioned. And then for success stories, I have, uh, this has been a very great success story for housing overall, both for housing stock and for affordable housing. And that lighting is an ancillary success story, maybe not ancillary is the right word, but, um, in a success story nonetheless. So that's what I have for tonight. Um, I didn't really have a vision on our, how this discussion would continue to go, but I do want to, um, Bill, I'll send you an email. Bill and Julie, I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Maybe if there's a few items you can dig into and then a month or two, we, a couple of months, we can talk again with the board.
Okay, that'd be great. One thing, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, one thing that we should put on there too, I, I believe that activated us was the outdoor dining. It was the one silver lining of this COVID was that it really activated the downtown. And we know that from our restaurant receipts.
Yeah. So for future DOD stuff, I know the duties for specifically development of properties. But there's a larger sort of picture here too. And I like that, like that larger picture to include. You know, I think outdoor dining is a good part of that, but complete streets, outdoor dining, that mixed use feel, you know, I, I think if we're making changes to the DOD regs, I think we need to explore more what the future vision is. And I say that because I think COVID has changed a lot of behaviors. In a lot of ways, people engage with both work and play and living. So I'd like to get us, if we're gonna make changes, to continue to think about what the best way to improve for, for what we consider to be a, an equitable future. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
So I don't have a great vision on this, but I think this is a, an opening, this is an eye opening discussion for me at least. And I think, I think I'll have a better, um, structured discussion next time. And, uh, maybe we can discuss potential areas where we might want to explore change. And that could be something we could do during the next fiscal year. Does that sound reasonable?
It tells us yes.
Yeah, I'm hearing yeses and seeing that. So, so thank you. Um, any, anything else to add? So that you heard, you heard what I said. I just, I spoke a lot just now. Anything else to add? Or subtract from, from that sort of list, polluted list I gave? Yeah, I know I said too much that way. There's, no one can comment or remember anything I said.
No, it's good, good. Thanks, Jim.
Bill, did you call this a pamphlet? Because it's a hundred and fifty-five pages long.
Well, you should see what I call an epic.
Just saying, pamphlet. That's a hefty pamphlet.
But I knew where it was.
Yeah, I'm very impressed.
Um, Bill, uh, master planner updates?
Yes, I have a couple.
And Julia, since you're joining us, please also contribute if you have any.
She's probably more up to date than I am on this stuff. Um, we got the Powder Mill Road Quarter Grant to do the second part of the work, which I sent to you. I hope you all saw that. So we are, we have it. So we can do our, what we had planned on. Um, Um meeting in person, uh, that can begin, meetings in person can uh begin on April first, uh, if we want to, so we should decide about that. Um.
Um, Bill, I already, if you if you sent your email designating that, starting in April, planning board will be hybrid.
Oh, I missed that.
Members can, oh, if it's, if if it's um, I I know there's hearings and we gotta post things in accordance to time, but um, my my thought team was to have hybrid option as before, so that people or be downtown if you prefer.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead and and schedule anything as a hybrid after May first?
And what, I'm happy to hear from members' points of view on this, but I feel like that's the most um, in accessible way for all members to be able to participate.
I think that's a good idea, good idea.
Natalie is thinking, I'm not really sure, maybe Natalie wants to get out of the house perhaps?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right. Oh, it's required for you to be downtown, Natalie, if you could.
And the third thing I have is, right before I left, um, I uh, sent you guys a um invitation, I don't know if it'd be that chance to go on it, but for a magic meeting uh, that featured Hudson and what they have been doing with their downtown. And it was a really good presentation from uh, my colleague um in in Hudson, and um, I have the um the link for that now, if anybody would like to see that, let me know, I don't wanna bomb you with all kinds of stuff, but but I think um we uh, i- i- it's worth watching, there's some really good ideas from that, and that was a uh, just a presentation, a half hour or so, so if anybody wants to see that, it's pretty good.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, Bill, can you send it out?
Yeah, I will do that, and um I see, oh, interesting, we just got a um, a email that I will circulate to you guys to commenting on the um our discussion uh, for the, about the um home-based businesses or home occupations, I'll send that around um after this today. So and I'll send the uh, link out for Hudson's um, video.
I just want you to do a snippet of what they did for the upper level stuff and how they activated it. So if you can just cut out that paragraph for me.
Okay, all right, I'll do that, I'll edit it down.
Uh, Annette, did you have something to share?
I'd like to have that link as well, you know, to me, please. Thank you.
Yeah, what other, uh, Julia, any updates?
Um, and then for me, we are, uh, yeah, we're we're chugging along on a on a lot of things, including, you know, the the bylaw updates um, that we need to get out, uh, that were already approved, but they need to get updated. Uh, and um, you know, the the M B T A communities initiative. Um, so Bill and I have been working on that, and we have a few more um things that they are requiring uh, for, it's the community forum and and all of those things, so we got our comments together, uh, I think you all saw those. Um and we will, uh, yeah, you know, we're we're excited to to see what they have to say and uh, clearly, the the way that they have made the M B T A communities is is to be um, you know, driven by us and by our comments, so we hope that they take that into consideration, but we'll let you know when we hear any updates.
Thanks, Julia. Any anything else, Bill Nemser?
Nope.
Any any hearings coming up at all?
We have, right now, we don't have anything, uh, any public hearing scheduled for planning board. For some reason, it's
Oh, yeah, there's a, everything's zoning right now.
Yeah, everything's zoning, I don't know what happened there, but.
All right, so for, what's our next meeting? What are our next meetings then? Our next meetings are
April, um
Twelve?
Twelve.
Yeah, April twelfth and twenty-sixth. So let's, uh Bill Crenshaw, is there any any home occupation stuff you'd like to add to one of those agendas, or is it? Feel feel free to email me and Bill if you, you know, if you and Brad feel like you wanna come back to us.
Yeah, yeah, it won't be the twelfth, might be the twenty-sixth.
Okay, um.
We may have two hearings on the twenty-sixth, I will warn you, there's two pre-apps that we're we're still figuring out, so it it's all gonna depend on legal hearings.
Well, they they can wait, because we'll make the first item, the home occupation, so Bill can check and get his time. Um, the Bob, do you think you're gonna need, would you, would you like any time in April to discuss Powder Mill Corridor stuff? Or are we still sort of pending a few sort of items?
Um, I I think if we put on the agenda, we, there's always something we could find to to work on.
All right, um, well, then, one item we'll put on the agenda for next time, Bill, will be a preliminary discussion of fiscal year twenty twenty, the next fiscal year goals, the goals of the planning board for the next fiscal year, so the for the meeting on April twelfth, an agenda item will be discussion of planning board goals, discussion of planning board goals for the next fiscal year. So we'll have the preliminary discussion and like to finalize those by May-June. Um, so I don't have a lot of, I don't, can't think of anything else really, but we could, we could also take a meeting off, if you guys wanna take a meeting off and put that all towards the end of April.
Chris, could we talk about um, complete streets? I know that was sort of on the agenda, but we didn't get to it tonight. I mean, it's just interesting looking at that your resolution you passed around, and it looks like as a town, we pretty much failed completely on implementation.
Maybe.
Little bit.
Yeah, maybe there'll be focus, we can focus the discussion on D O D and complete streets at least, and then widen it to complete streets around town.
And with that is um, the ADA accessibility that comes into play.
Which is one of my favorite topics. Okay, yeah, so let's keep the meeting for April twelfth, um, Bill will have a complete streets discussion, we'll have a uh preliminary discussion for next fiscal year's um goals. And I think that would be a good meeting. And then we'll leave the April twenty-sixth meeting open for some potential hearings, and if not, we can discuss either Powder Mill or Home Occupation.
Excellent.
And then maybe Natalie be ready to start an A D U's at that point.
Yeah, that's a good point, I forgot about that, with the A D U's, Natalie.
Yeah, that's a good thing you're not the chairman, because I have not forgotten about it.
Right, oh, it's, that's right.
All right, um, anything else? All right, Jim, you wanna do this, the honors?
I'd be very happy to, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, um, all in favor, um, we'll call uh, Jim Pullman.
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Nice.